Want to call the board meeting to order. Call at 7 o'clock. We have a very special evening tonight. Great to see people at our meeting and have folks here in person. So it's a wonderful time of year to celebrate our staff and those who are retiring. And it's been a special night, and I'm glad we were able to do it in person. And thank you for coming. Tonight's meeting, we have all board members present except for Ms. Skamerski, who will be here shortly. She has a work commitment. And with that, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll do some of our board business first before we get to the recognition part of our agenda. So first order of business is the draft minutes from June 9th. Board members, any questions or comments, revisions? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Next item is the board forum. Typically, what we do is we go around the board and have any comments before the board meeting starts in the business. So I'll start at my left with Jennifer. Anything? Good. John, it's good. Mark? Deanna, good. Kathleen? Joanne? Frank? Okay. We're streaming right now. Peter, we're good? Okay. Anybody on who needs a sound check, they can... Okay? Okay. Now we'll move to the, excuse me, the public comment and forum. As we have all year when we have limited public participation, we do have the board of at email set up. Linda Wager will be our person who will monitor that. So I'll read our public content. "Members, residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wish to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and declared out of order." So at this point, Linda, do we have any emails from the public at this point?
We do, Mr. Buno.
Okay.
Thank you. The first email is from Rob and Sandy Potter. They would like a little more time on reading the use of the federal funds and responding to them. Our next comment is from Chris Leahy, who's been a student athlete and coach for 30-plus years as an educator. And he has more trust in this board than he's ever been, any he's ever been involved in. Without question, the East Green Bush Central School District Board is one of the most effective and productive elected bodies I've ever been associated with. That said, he trusts that the federal funds will be used wisely. Amanda Martinez Kirby is very excited about the possibility of after-school enrichment programs, and she would like to see a little more focus on sustainable school buildings moving forward, being more green. And then from Natalie Mulligan, she has several concerns about children still wearing masks in school. And she has sent us an email regarding the types of germs that are found on masks. That's all at this time.
Very good. Anything you want to respond to, Mr. Simons? Because we did talk about more input from the community regarding the federal funds in terms of surveying, so.
So at some point, when we have answered all the board members' questions and concerns sufficiently, we will put out more information regarding the federal program proposals. And welcome any, anyone to continue to comment on those.
Very good. Okay, with that, that concludes our public forum, and we will move to reports and presentations, the superintendent and the, while everyone is here. So turn it over to Mr. Simons. So normally, we have our student council, but the last meeting, we were informed it was the last time they were going to tell us anything, but they are here to be recognized. So.
Katie Ryan.
There you are. There you are. Okay.
Well, this certainly is a very special evening for our board, our district, and our community, and particularly all of our honorees that we will be celebrating this evening. It's also special because we really haven't had a board meeting that permitted more members of the public and staff to attend. And so we feel very good about how we're going to be conducting the last board meeting of the year. It's really special as the superintendent to recognize those members of our staff who have achieved tenure. And I always point out that it is a significant achievement. It is not something that East Green Bush Central School District treats lightly, and particularly over the last four years, as the majority of our members that we honor tonight received tenure. It has been a challenging last 17 months to complete your probationary period with everything that you've had to adapt to, to learn, and to accomplish in service to our students. I encourage everyone who receives tenure in our district to continue their professional growth, always be a learner first. That's how we model for our students, our passion for education. And as you are recognized for tenure this evening, continue your growth in service to our students, always trying to learn and get better at your craft. So at this time, I would like to recognize the members of the East Green Bush Administrators' Association who are being recommended to the board for tenure. And I would ask each person to come up, receive from Marissa Cannon, our Director of Human Resources, a certificate of appreciation and recognition from our board and our district, and from Ms. Wager, our Director of Business and Finance, a little treat for you. Typically, when we've done this two years ago and prior, we had a gathering afterwards, but we're still very mindful of the COVID-19 restrictions for indoor programs. And so we have an individually wrapped treat for you, and I, my understanding is they're very good, although I did not sample them. And after everyone is recognized, both our tenure recipients, our retirees, and our student council members, we will also name those folks that could not be here this evening to recognize them, and then you are free to go and leave. And you go with the well wishes of myself and our board. So without further ado, our first administrator, and I'm pleased to recommend to the board for tenure, is Patricia Bianco-Farnin, who is our Assistant Principal at Columbia High School. Is Patty here? Our next recognition of tenure goes to our Director of Technology, who has certainly been a very busy man, always, but over the course of the last year and a half, Peter Goodwin. Our next recipient of a tenure award is our principal at Bell Top Elementary School, So congratulations to each of our three administrators receiving tenure this evening. Next group is our school-related personnel. Our school-related personnel members have been critical to our reopening plans, providing all kinds of support for our students. I don't know what we would do without them. I often refer to SRP as the glue that keeps us all together and supported and goes above and beyond to support our students. In the area of SRP, we have Sarah Collier. Is Sarah here? Let's have another round of applause for our members of SRP who have earned tenure We have a long list of teachers who we are recommending for tenure this evening, and we're very excited for them. We want to make sure that, that they continue to recognize how much we appreciate what they have done, particularly over the last year and a half. Alicia Applebaum. We have another round of applause for all of our EGTA members receiving tenure this I have to say, as all of you were coming up here, I could not believe that it's been four years since we hired the large majority of you. It seems like maybe it's the pandemic, or maybe it's my age, but the time has gone by really quickly. And maybe not for you, but we remember when we hired you and brought your appointments to the board. Again, congratulations to all of the employees that we are awarding tenure to this evening. It is really an honor to be able to do so. And again, I continue to encourage you to do the best you can every day for our students. It's quite fitting that we honor our retirees on the same evening that we are honoring those of you who've been completing your probationary periods. And I think there's no better role models than those that we are going to honor who are retiring from the district regarding their service to our students, to the community, the impact that they have had on our students. Many of the individuals that we will be recognizing this evening who are retiring have worked for the district, not just for years, but in some cases for decades, and have had an enormous impact on students. So without further ado, I want to recognize a member of our CSEA group who is retiring, Retiring members of the East Green Bush Teachers Association, Karen Anderson-Green.
So John, are you the longest-tenured employee in the district as a teacher? Forty? That's quite a few years.
We have a nice round of applause for the members of our teachers who are retiring. At this time, we want to honor one of our management confidential employees who retired earlier this year. She was our payroll clerk, among other things that she continues to do for the district, Mary Tremblay. As Mr. Buno mentioned earlier this evening, we've had the good fortune of hearing from our student council leaders, members of our 2021 graduating class who will graduate on Friday afternoon. And we want to take a minute to just extend our appreciation for all of your efforts to not only promote positive student activities within the high school, but also keeping us informed of everything that's going on. And I particularly want to recognize that you've gone above and beyond what typical students do to make a contribution to your school and to the entire district. And so at this time, I want to extend a certificate of appreciation from our board to Katie Azenbauer. Ryan Sealy. So we do want to take a minute to recognize those individuals who we were honored this evening who were not able to be present. We'll start with recognizing one of our employees who would be receiving tenure tonight after the board approves the resolution, Amy Williams, one of our teaching assistants. We also have several members of the CSEA who are retiring or could not be present this evening. I just want to read those names. And after I read all of the names, let's give them a big round of applause. Vincent Lombardo, Russell Lucier, Edward Ochsner, Carol Pearson, Cynthia Pore, Andrew Smith, and Kimberly Taffor. Congratulations to all of you. Members of the EGTA who were not able to be here tonight, who are retiring, Timothy Hewnek, Bennett Calvin, I believe is here. Bennett, why don't you come on up? After Bennett's years of service to the district, it's okay if he makes a surprise appearance every once in a while. Thank you, Bennett. Peter Zilgme. Members of our SRP group who were unable to respond or be here this evening, Linda DiRobertis, Donald Lance, Beverly Preshaw, Mary Schaefer, Donna Streck, and Tamara Wagler. Now, Marissa and Linda went over the script with me several times before the board meeting this evening, and I did steer from the script at least twice, and I apologize for that. Did we miss anybody? Okay, so everybody who's here has been honored appropriately. We want to give everybody, our tenure recipients, our retirees, and our student council leaders a big East Greenbush round of applause. So we're unable to pose for the photo as we usually have done. We will make sure that everyone here receives a copy of the minutes reflecting what occurred here tonight. You may want that for a scrapbook or something of that nature, or you may not want it, but you might get it anyways. At this time, you are free to go, congratulate each other on your way. And again, congratulations and thank you for what you have done over the years to contribute.
Jeff, before we finish, we have one more recognition. So if you could just please remain still.
Thank you, Mr. Buno, for having a better memory than me. Very good.
I just want to recognize someone who's given so much to her community and to this board for the last six years. We're sad to see her go. I want to thank Jennifer Massey for all she's done for this community, all she's done for our students, and it's someone who's given selfishly, selfishly from her heart to our children and to this board. So thank you for six years of wonderful service, and we wish you the best. So thank you very much.
All right, I hope I can get through this. Over the last several weeks, I have dreaded tonight. As I know, I will deeply miss serving. And at the same time, I cannot be more thrilled to have Cheryl Kennedy join our board and push things forward. Therefore, I hope it is okay to take just a minute or two to bid my farewell from my board seat, although I'm standing now. So throughout the last six years, our progress and challenges, as well as our collaboration and differing opinions at times, I have found an ultimate joy in this amazing opportunity that I have been given to serve the East Greenbush Central School District community. I have seen, experienced, and learned a lot, and I believe we should all be proud. There is something unique about our district and our community, and I think it has a lot to do with the people. It is the people that I have come to know, love, and respect. My interactions with all the educators, the support staff, administrators, parents, and the entire community have shown me a group of people who go way beyond the call of duty, and they look to do what is in the best interest for our students. Yes, there have been differing discussions, and each time people came to the table, open-minded, willing to listen and share their perspective, seeking to do what is best for our kids and the families we all serve and support. I think it is our culture and the collaboration willingness to do what it takes that reflects the leadership and everyone in the district. My mantra this past year has been be the change you wish to see in the world, and this happens when we put our heart and our minds into our service, our motives, as well as our discourse. I am humbled and honored to have served with this amazing and talented group of people. They are some of our community's real unsung heroes. Mike, Mark, John, Michelle, Frank, Joanne, Kathleen, and Deanna. If it were not for all of you, my journey would not have been complete. Each of you have touched my life in different ways, and you've taught me a lot. I hope each of you takes pride as well as encouragement from our progress, that you continue to build strong relationships and pick those issues carefully to win in those things that really make a difference. Going forward, I ask that you stand firm in your decisions, that you continue to advocate for what is right, and to work together to find common ground. This is the way to ensuring that we provide each and every student a specialized and yet unique and equal educational experience. As I move forward, please know I will look for ways for us to continue to fight together for the funding and the other needed reforms in our educational systems for every child and every student. Lastly, I cannot leave without saying a few thank yous. Thank you to each administrator, Mr. McHugh, Mr. Simons, Marissa, and Linda. Thank you to my fellow board members, the entire district, the students and the parents who have given me the most meaningful and precious gifts, the gifts of time and the passion to work together to ensure a better education for our children. You have all made me a better person, and for that, I am forever grateful. You have challenged me to grow, to learn, and to also have taught me to continue to look at the things from different perspectives. Lastly, and most importantly, and please make sure that this gets as part of the record, thank you to my husband, Stephen, and to my two daughters, Ally and Olivia, who have always fully supported me, my passions, and my tireless calling to serve and for never complaining once about it. I can only hope and pray I have served and provided the support this district and the community most certainly deserved. Again, thank you for this amazing opportunity. I am humbled and honored to have served for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And as you mentioned, it's so important our family support us in the work we do here on the board. It is volunteer service, a lot of time, and thank you. So with that, I'll pick up where Mr. Simons left off in his piece, and just so grateful for everyone's service in the district. A lot of new faces, a lot of faces that are going to still be with us, even though you're leaving the district. You're never far from our thoughts and our hearts, and you're always welcome to come back and visit and do the amazing things that you did while you were here as a staff person at the district. So thank you very much. With that, you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but I'm sure there's a lot of things that you'd like to be doing. But you can watch us live on this livestream. So we always enjoy that. So great to see everyone. Have a great night, and thank you very much. We'll let the crowd kind of disperse a little bit, and then we'll get right into our next items. Our first discussion item is the continued planning and the use of the federal funds. We heard it mentioned in the public comments. We had discussions at the last board meeting. I received feedback from the board members. I forwarded that feedback to Mr. Simons only today. Unfortunately, didn't have a lot of time to look at that, but he did give us some feedback. And I'd like us to get an update at kind of what progress we've made in terms of having conversations since that last board meeting, provide some feedback, and then have some questions for the board about how we want to proceed and to support the planning for the federal funds. So, Mr. Simons?
At our prior board meeting, we presented preliminary ideas for the use of our federal funds. There's the CURSA funds, as well as the American Rescue Plan funds, a total in approximate $7 million that the district is scheduled to receive. We are empowered by the legislation and the regulations associated with these funds to address the academic, mental health, social, emotional needs of the children, those students who have been impacted by COVID-19, as well as address other issues that might help our students transition back to some level of normalcy in September. And we do anticipate that many of our students who were impacted would benefit from these programs and services that we recommended. The board heard a number of public comments regarding the proposal. We are required to consult with all of our stakeholders regarding how we spend these funds. The board had asked to be provided with some time to provide some feedback on each of the proposals. As Mr. Buno indicated, I received that feedback this afternoon. During the last period of time between the last board meeting and this meeting, we have refined several of the proposals through conversations with our administrators, our staff that work in particular programs that we intend to either modify by serving other groups of students. For example, in the case of the MAP program and the CTAP program, there were recommendations to expand those programs for specific students. We also collaborated with those bargaining units whose contracts have provisions that relate to those types of provisions, those job descriptions, and those services. I provided the board with written summaries of some of the development of those programs, including some job descriptions on Friday in the board packet. We provided the job description for the 12-month nursing position, the teacher on special assignment to assist with the coordination of response to intervention. We have had some conversations with state representatives regarding the National Archery in Schools program, which is coordinated through the Department of Environmental Conservation, has an employee that actually helps schools put that program into place with certifications and training and all of the requirements. We are interested in receiving as much feedback as we can so that we can move forward because we are concerned that all of the districts in our area and across the state will be competing for the same staff. And we want to balance our timelines in such a way that we can receive and honor and respect appropriate opportunity for board comment, be able to respond thoughtfully to those questions and concerns that we've received. But we are worried about making sure that we can have program staff in place, and particularly in some priority areas, and meet the timelines to have those folks in place by September. So we wanted to start somewhat of an open discussion tonight about the process, as Mr. Buno had indicated, of moving forward on this planning, and try to get as much information to you as possible through updates. And then we would like some discussion this evening of permitting the district to move forward on some of the postings and advertising for the positions with an understanding that the board at a future meeting has the authority to establish the position and then subsequently fill the position. But we just want to start the advertising and the posting process to draw pools of candidates. So we wanted to have an open discussion about how we balance all of those needs.
Sure. I guess I'll open it for comments regarding that. I think that the timeliness regarding the request for the staffing and the process takes some time. So the longer we wait, if there's like an anticipated vacancies or, you know, posting in a way that at least to start generating interest and comply with whatever processes that we have contractually, and then knowing that it's summer and there's a lot of people who already have found positions or... or are going to be looking for positions, so we can at least get an opportunity to do that. So I guess the first question is, is that something the board would be open to as we look at this process? And are there some kind of burning questions that you still have remaining based on the feedback that we've got so far? So one suggestion also came up is, and I'll throw that out there now, is do we need to have any follow-up conversations as kind of a working group meeting so we can have things in place and approved? Because our next meeting is July 13th.
13th.
13th, and the deadline to post things for the one is the 15th. So the floor is yours, board member. So give me some feedback, give the administration some feedback on how they want to proceed. So, Mark?
We have in the past posted in anticipation of need. We have, we do, we hold off on the interviews and the hiring process until the board is, at least the board is, has consensus that we are going to establish those positions. So I made some notes today of to suggest how this might work. I need to refer to my notes. But as Mike had indicated, there isn't a meeting till the 13th. The final authorization and establishment of the positions would not occur until after the board feels that they've been provided with the information that they requested. That could potentially occur by the July 13th board meeting. There may be other opportunities to have further discussion. Our CRSAA application is due July 15th. And it is a pretty extensive application. And so we need to be able to prepare that enough in advance. Typically, our posting periods are 14 days. So if you gave us the authorization to advertise positions, you're not saying go ahead and hire. You're saying you're giving us the permission to go ahead and recruit with an understanding that we're going to have conversations either on July 13th, or I had talked to Mike, and I don't know what the interest of the board is in having this. But I am available next week to have board, a special board meeting to discuss and go over all the information and the requests. And I'm certainly, and I'm certain my administrators would be able to attend that. But if we post tomorrow, for example, and you gave us to go ahead to post the positions tomorrow, we have about a 14-day period in order to complete that process. And then we would know whether we have a sufficient pool of candidates to recommend. In particular, I am concerned about the elementary early intervention positions and the teaching assistant positions. And I know both of those items have, there are some questions about those items and some further detail that folks would like. But it would be, we would advertise these positions with an understanding that we are not necessarily saying those positions would be filled. We advertise in anticipation of need, and we determine what that need is. So hypothetically, if you said we support the idea of 10 positions at the early intervention level, fine. If you say, could you adjust it down? We certainly would be open to that. We wouldn't hire the 10 people. We would hire less than that. But everybody is competing. Everybody in our state is competing for these positions. And we never like to put the board in a position where they feel they don't have sufficient information on something. But the timelines at which this, at least one of these grants came into play for our district and the turnaround time for the application is really the pressing issue. It's not necessarily anything else than that. So you're not saying it's a done deal by authorizing us to go forward and advertise positions. You're letting us start the process.
So you're talking about just getting all the paperwork together? Or are you talking about putting them out there for people to see? Because once you put them out there for people to see, the assumption is there that it's been approved by the board that we're hiring these positions. And then it looks to the public, hey, East Green Bush Central School District is hiring all these positions. Then if the board decides that we're not going to go forward with with certain positions, then you got to tell all those people that put in, sorry, we're not hiring that job. I just don't think it's good practice. We did this several years ago, prior to you, Jeff, and it just wasn't a good scene because we posted some stuff out there, and then we didn't hire those positions. And, you know, people put in for jobs, and then when those jobs weren't offered, they're like, well, why even post them? It just, I don't believe it's good practice to put something out there that this board has not approved that we're going to hire. And then we're leading people on to say, you know, we're hiring these positions. I'd rather have us meet and discuss. And if you want to have all the paperwork ready, and then, you know, once it's approved by the board and submitted, you know, I'm supportive of that. Not saying I don't support the positions.
I understand.
But I don't think that we should put things out there that we're going to hire prior to this board agreeing on what positions we're going to hire.
I understand the concern, and that's why I suggested that the anticipation of need be included in the posting. It's not uncommon to do that, to draw a pool of candidates for a position. The district doesn't have any obligation to hire any individuals that...
No, I'm not saying they do. It just, it just doesn't look good for us when we put out a job and then we say, you know what, we're not hiring that job. What was even posted for? It's just, it's, I just don't think it's good practice.
Well, I just want to, I understand. I just, you know, just want to make sure that everybody on the board understands that. I only received that information and your questions today at 12:30, 1 o'clock. So I'm not really fully prepared to answer them this evening.
You haven't had the opportunity to totally review, you know, all the questions that the board has asked, nor would I expect you to get them today and have answers for tonight. I wouldn't expect you to do that. But, so you haven't seen a lot of our requests and a lot of our information for data. So we haven't heard what you have to say and your, you know, what your new proposals are. And you said you shrunk down. So we haven't heard all that. So to say, okay, yeah, go ahead and post these positions when you don't know our thoughts, and we don't know what your new positions are. So I just think...
I understand. I haven't really changed any new positions. What we really, what we really were trying to do in these meetings is clarify some of the questions and concerns that we might have about adding to these programs. So for example, the MAP program discussion was really about what's the process going to be to identify the sixth graders who would be in those programs, making sure that those programs are not viewed as feeder programs for alternative programs that come at higher levels, trying to understand the breakdown of responsibilities. So for example, if we added a counselor to, what would the job, what would that counselor be doing? How would that alleviate and help shift some of the other counselors that are involved in the program? So we wanted to be able to be as clear as possible and specific as possible in each one of the programs that we recommended to be able to explain how we thought this program was going to impact the kids. So we didn't necessarily make a determination to reduce any of those recommendations as of this point because we believe that every single one of them is important to having the impact on the students academically as well as socially emotionally. Now, that's, that is the basis of what our recommendations are, is that we believe that everything that we put on there and on that program will have a positive impact on students and is consistent with what the intent of the monies is for. But we haven't, but I haven't been able to, as you said, Mark, haven't been able to, I looked at it, I read it, but, and I sent it to my administrative team, but we haven't gotten together and, you know, prepared our information.
And I'm okay with that because you just got it. So, you know, understood. But, you know, some of the positions that you want to advertise, there may have been board members that have submitted questions regarding those positions that maybe want to see some additional data, want to see some additional clarification, you know, maybe right now they don't support it. But once you see their questions, their comments, you may say, oh, okay, give that information. And then that internal, so, okay, yeah, now I understand better and I support it. So...
I appreciate that.
To be fair to everybody, I think you should be able to review what we submitted. And then we should be able to hear back from you to what questions some of the board members had asked, some additional information, and then come to the consensus. I mean, that's my opinion.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Anybody else?
Are you, are you going to go, Joanne?
Joanne?
I agree with what Mark's saying. And I understand fully, you just received our questions. But knowing the questions that I sent you, and if that's multiplied by nine, you know, you have a lot of questions to answer. And I don't know that we can make an informed decision unless we get our questions answered. I'm concerned, like Mark, I understand the anticipated opening, you know, posting it as an anticipated position. But I guess I just think of the person that's applying for that position to be all ready to come to East Green Bush, and then three weeks later, find out the position is not happening. Maybe they didn't apply to Niskiuna because they thought they were coming to East Green Bush or were hopeful. And I just don't know that we should play that game. I tend to agree with Mark.
Okay, so all Marissa's in the field, I'm in the field. This is a different time in terms of positions. And I'll tell you right now, if you're not out in front of this, we will not have the people. If you want to wait a week and have a meeting next week and then do it, I'm just telling you that this weekend coming up, people are leaving school. We have to be out there, out in front. I, my personal opinion is, we should at least have something out in, in the field that lets people know that East Green Bush Central School District is going to be having these, these needs. And if we don't do that now, and we continue to wait, we're not going to have the ability to fill those positions down the road because they'll take other positions, because the process is going to take a long time. And I fully support the recommendations. I think that it's been a thorough look at everything. If there are specific questions on need and how they're going to be used, then that's one thing. But I guess we have to basically be in a position where our kids come back in the fall, that they have everything they need. And that if that means overstaffing for a while, and then peeling back and placing people in different positions as we learn the needs, then I'd rather be in that position than be short people and not have enough resources for our kids and our staff. Because it's going to be, it's going to be challenging, very challenging for some of these students to come back. So that's kind of where I am. I'm okay with a meeting next week and doing something. But I want everybody to participate in this process. We did have feedback from people with questions. Other people were just very supportive of going forward and how they felt with the recommendations. So...
Mike, can I just ask you, I appreciate those comments. Can I ask you, from your position, looking on OLOS, are we seeing other suburban council schools already putting that out there?
There are positions posted now, and these are just for regular openings, too. So everything's out there. And if you go to OLOS, there are hundreds and hundreds of positions across, I mean, the region. It's pretty bad. There's a, we're not going to fill all these positions. I think our, our reputation as a district, and Marissa can probably fill us in, and that will help us a lot. But we're competing against some very high caliber school districts in the suburban council. And, you know, we're going to lose people to their districts if we don't move and get the best we can. So...
And it can also tarnish our reputation for us advertising jobs that we don't hire for. And I think that's important. Like Joanne said, if we put a position out there with intent to hire, and then we don't hire it, and that person says, well, jeez, I really wanted to work for East Green Bush, so I didn't put in for schools A, B, and C.
I think they're putting in for schools A, B, C, D, and E. That's the thing, Mark. They're putting in for everybody.
Exactly.
And they're just, whoever calls first?
If they want to work for East Green Bush Schools, and they get another job offer from somebody else, and then all of a sudden, East Green Bush offers them a job, they really want to work for East Green Bush Schools, they're going to come to East Green Bush Schools because we have that good reputation. And our pay and our benefits are in line with some of these, these other districts around us. So if somebody really wants to work here, they're going to come here.
Well, I think we've lost people recently because of other job offers. So we're competitive, but I think we have to realize that we're, it's a, it's a buyer's market, seller's market? So...
It's a buyer's market.
So I guess that, that's kind of my position. I'd like to hear from some others, too.
I agree with Mike. I think the fact that we would be putting it up as an anticipated opening, that doesn't necessarily mean that we are absolutely saying that we're going to be hiring 10 people. We anticipate we're going to hire 10 people, but we may next week decide it's only going to be eight, or decide it's going to be seven. But it is tough out there right now to get the right people for the right job. And our kids deserve us trying to get the best people in here now. I'd say we start looking now and do the best that we can for the kids because they are all going to need it in the fall.
The, if we were to meet next week and as part of the process and continue the conversations in more in-depth and just have a focused group who's interested in getting their answers to questions or not sure about the numbers, we can do that. I'd be glad to do that. And those who want to attend can attend that. Be more of a workshop meeting as opposed to a board meeting. Break?
Yeah, I would support that we move forward. I don't think drawing any advertisement for any position in the future would necessarily tarnish the image or reputation of the district. You know, it's a district that is very solid when it comes to its reputation. So it happens. You know, you can always post things out there. You don't need them. It's no longer available. I don't see anything wrong with that. I think that we should just move forward.
Okay. Anyone else? Jennifer?
Can I just ask a question? Sorry. So when we would post this, we wouldn't be, would we be just doing it by category and not saying the number? Right. So you see what I'm saying? Like if you put, because you know you're going to need at least, at least one teaching assistant, and you're going to need one teacher, and one, you don't need one, you see what I'm saying? So is there a way for you to not necessarily say a number? Because I think multiple positions, yeah, may be available or something like that. But I don't think anybody would disagree that each of the different categories in some way we would be looking for, right? Maybe as a compromise in the meantime. One of the challenges that you have, and not that you care what my opinion is now that I'm like leaving next week, although is this an attempt to get me to come back next week? I don't know. If you do it on Wednesday, I have to or something? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just teasing. Because I'm happy to come and help if I can. But is there a way to do that? Because one of the things that you'll miss if you do post next week is you're going to hit that holiday weekend. Everybody will have checked out by the first, pretty much, if they didn't check out already this week. So you will miss that following weekend. It's just the nature of recruiting. And unfortunately, having 30 years doing this, it's just what will happen. And the competition is fierce. But is there a way for us to just post by position rather by, rather than number to start the influx, unless there is a particular category that we're all opposed to, but then have a working meeting next week to decide what that number is and then update the posting? Because I think you can update the posting, right, Marissa? So I don't know, just a thought, just a compromise, something to discuss.
Would you be open to that suggestion, Mark, to at least have the categories there and then up to?
So every one of these 17 that involves hiring somebody you want to post?
Yes.
Isn't that more than $7 million in here?
No. Because some of the positions are already in the budget.
Because some of the positions are already in the budget. The replacement positions such as several of the teaching assistant positions are, there are six and a half current positions are of those 15 already in the budget. So they, there are people that are leaving. They retired at the end of this year.
Right.
Or they didn't get hired because.
But if, if they're additional based on the, the federal funds, that's what I'm saying is if it's additional using federal funds, then I think we need a discussion. If it's, you're going to post every position in here, and, and, you know, that's what you're going to do, then, you know.
You, you could put.
Why did I bother doing this then?
Well, the final determination as to whether those positions are approved rests with the board, still rests with the board.
Well, not if we're going to post it next week.
Posting is not establishing the position. Posting is simply advertising that you may have positions available, uh, and you start the recruitment process. It doesn't necessarily mean that you are going to vote to establish 10 intervention specialist positions, nor does it mean you would vote to approve the, um, seven new teaching assistant positions. It would be, uh, that would come at a later meeting, once we've been able to provide you with the questions and concern, just the questions and concerns that you had.
Like to build on what Jennifer said, what I, I mean, when you, if you look at the, the list, you could post for elementary teacher anticipated vacancies. Um, but you don't know where to place them. Like there's AIS, there's MAP, there's, um, K3 intervention. So there's, there's one title of elementary teacher. You get multiple applications for that one title. And then, once you're ready to assign or know what exactly they're going to be placed in, you know where to, uh, uh, basically the, make the offers to. So you'll get elementary teachers applying for positions. Then from there, you have the pool established, and then from there you will narrow it down to the specific locations or programs if the board approves of them that you can offer. So you still at least have the pool to draw from. If you say, the, the board says, we're not going to do elementary MAP, that's okay, it's gone. But we still have elementary AIS, elementary K3 intervention, or we decide it's six instead of 10, that's kind of where the discretion is for the board. But to get the titles out there and establish a pool, especially for the, the larger ones, I think it, it gives us, Marissa, an advantage to be at least seeing what's out there and coming to the board and say, hey, I got no applicants for this position, this position. We need to be more aggressive, or what's our priority going to be? Because I can only get four people for five positions. We're going to have to eliminate something. We're going to have to go a different direction with something. So I think that's where our discretion is. Like TAs are TAs across the district, correct? So if we design, assign them someplace and we have maybe up to, at least we have a teach, teaching assistant pool, which we don't really get a big pool anymore, right? We at least want to have the word out there. And we may only get a handful. But that's just going to be the nature of, of how this process is going to work. Um, so we're not short-handed. Again, I think that the title is okay to get out there, anticipated need in, across the district, and then from there we scale depending on what the need and approval is. That's kind of like how I would approach it.
I just want to add a little bit more on the teaching assistants for just a minute. Um, six and a half of the teaching assistant positions are, uh, been vacated by, uh, either a retirement or a resignation, or something that we put in the budget because we were going to assign that TA to kindergarten this current school year, but we never filled the position because the kindergarten sections got reduced, given the number of students that went for remote, and we didn't need a teaching assistant. Of the seven new positions, three, we don't have any discretion on. They're driven by IEPs.
IEPs, right.
So of the seven new positions, three are IEP bound. They're individual students whose IEPs say they have to have a teaching assistant. And either the superintendent nor the board can overrule the CSE. You can ask the CSE to go back and evaluate that.
Right.
Um, and then we had just one and a half, uh, teaching assistants resign since we gave you the update on Friday. So, um.
Joanne, you got a comment?
It really is four discretionary positions, four discretionary new TA positions of the 15 that the total is at now.
I just wanted to say while everyone was talking, I went in on OLS, and now I can truly see, I see the anticipated positions all across the capital region. So I can appreciate what you're saying, um, might happen. Um, I could support us doing that with the understanding that we get all our questions answered before the July 13th meeting.
Sure.
Even if that means we have to have two, three, um, meetings to get everything answered.
Appreciate that.
Okay. I mean, I think we can wrap it up in a couple hours. If you want to meet next week for those interests, go, go line by line if you want to do that.
So Jeff, just to make sure, all those TAs, well, the six of them are in next year's budget. When you say you're talking 2021, right? We're not talking 1920, 2122, sorry.
They were in the 2021 budget.
Yep. Okay.
And they're in the 2122 budget.
So.
And there are actually people in the slots this year who are, with the exception of the ones that we didn't hire kindergarten, and they need to be replaced for next year. 2021.
Regardless. So I mean, really what you're saying is, and part of this conversation was if we shift the funding to the federal funds versus the general budget, we can then be able to be in a better position with the overall budget during the year than beyond that to do things to the sustainability, to put in reserves, to increase our reserves, to be careful about how, um, when we plan for the 2223 budget, we have adequate reserves to make sure like we did this year, and maybe draw some of things down to keep the tax levy again as low as possible for the, for the taxpayers. That's another way to look at it.
And, and I do apologize for being late to have another meeting, but, um, I, I am with Joanne. I think there's a lot of questions. I mean, I can support it tentatively, but I don't know if I can support all these programs until the questions are addressed. Uh, you know, with the purposes, a little bit more of a detail analysis of some of these, uh, particularly the ones with additional hires, just because I do still have the same concern, which I thought Mark might have, which is I can't, I don't want to commit to having somebody for three years and then either increasing our taxes significantly or laying off for this cap, for this district. So.
So what I, what I said prior, prior year coming was that I was asking for the authority to go and advertise the positions based on anticipated need, but with a commitment from us that we would, we would not fill any positions until such time as the board approved all of those positions, the establishment through a resolution.
And, and what positions are you talking about?
Every, every early intervention specialist.
Okay.
Counselor for MAP.
The ones from the list.
Elementary teacher certified for MAP, sixth grade, science teacher for CTAP, 12-month nurse, social worker for attendance intervention, elementary AIS two and a half, which were already in the general fund budget, middle school AIS, which is already in the general fund budget, and then the 15 teaching assistants. So not, uh, as far as after-school stipends and those after-school programs and things like that, we're not concerned about those. We're continuing to discuss how those would be structured with our administrators and our unions that are involved. But to, to just take the first step to draw a pool of qualified candidates for these positions with an understanding is we're not even going to interview until you are, uh, approving those positions.
Right.
Can, can I just clarify? And that, because I don't know if you're, um, you were here yet or not. One of the suggestions was, is there a way to create the postings? We can go out and not have to wait till the holiday, but do it by category, not necess, instead of number, because we need people within those anyways for replacements. So we need TAs, we need teachers at certain levels. So just as a, as a compromise, and then you guys can finalize what those numbers look like. Because each of those categories, right, was already either in the budget or needs to be replaced as far as if you do just a gen, generic, general category.
The other thing is, you know, if, if, if people are opposed to certain things, then what do you want to spend the money on? I guess is the question too. The money's got to be spent within two to three years, right, Linda? So in the alternative, what, what do you do? It's one thing to ask for recommendations, but this is what the, the administration is asking for recommendations. Do you have any other ideas?
I agree. I just, you can't be here and talk.
No, no one would want that.
I'm just saying.
I agree. Absolutely. Yeah. And I think, I think we've shown as a board, we're pretty conservative, uh, over time. And, and I think that one of the things that we've done and seen is that we respond quickly to our students' needs. And I think they've established quite a list of needs, um, that are going to be overwhelming for our kids. I just, uh, you know, we were hybrid. We weren't in person like a lot of local school districts. Um, our parents were going to expect that support. And if we don't have the support, it's going to be challenging for our teachers and, and those who remain. So. But I think, um, if generally we can support position titles posted, uh, come together to talk about more specifics, the administration can have a chance to look at the questions that were posed from folks. Come together early next week, uh, with a workshop of some sort. I think, uh, what would you propose next Tuesday or something? Maybe the 29th?
Monday or Tuesday.
Monday or Tuesday. I'm available. I'd be glad to sit in on a workshop. It's not a board meeting. It's a workshop, right? Could we do that?
Well, we'll just share the, we'll just share the, I'll send you in advance.
Yep.
The answers to the questions that are on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
And then we'll just go over it and discuss it.
Yeah. Does that sound good?
And come to a consensus on.
And if.
Where we're going to go.
If you can, uh, come in person or we can do it virtual combination, we can set that up. The boardroom here is fine. We're all, is that good? Sound good?
What date do you want to?
Monday or Tuesday? I could do either. I'm actually on vacation from work. So let's go go fishing, but I guess, maybe we'll go early.
Tuesday would be better.
Tuesday would be better. Gives you more time. Tuesday, Mark?
A little more time.
And you know, if you can't make it, just submit your questions. If you, you know, we have, we have other questions. Jennifer's in.
Mike, you ready? You ready for me yet?
Before we order John, anybody else? We're ready for John. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks for the nice, uh, dialogue that we had here this evening because that's really what this process is about, is, um, brainstorming to come up with creative solutions for complicated problems with an unknown involved. And as I break this down, I don't, I, I kind of look at it from a different lens. What is the money intended for? The money in it is intended to fill the gaps. It's not part of our long-term strategy. It's a short-term, um, stopgap to try to recover 17 months that every student in this district has missed. Whether you're a good student, poor student, the effect of this is unknown. So we're actually being asked to regulate, legislate, and create with an unknown. And I think that we would be negligent if we didn't move forward as fast and efficiently as possible to, to solve these gaps that are there. I'm not an educator, but I've been around this game for a while, and I listened to a lot of the, the pain that the parents have come to us throughout the last 17 months. So we have an opportunity to come together to be creative, to fill the holes and attempt to. There's things that we know are going to be presented with us, but there's also a portion of this that is a great unknown. And part of dealing with an unknown, being involved in critical incident management, this is a critical incident of a long duration, and we have to be able to react and have the resources, not what we know today, but what we find out in September. We don't even know if we're going to be open in September. We don't even know if we're going to have to shut down again if a different string. So there, we, we can be in the weeds on all these what-ifs. But one thing I know is there's a whole group of students who have not been served justly in the last 17 months. And I feel a great obligation to each and every one of those children and families and taxpayers to spend their money in the most efficient and appropriate way that we can. In regards to my obligation and feeling for people we don't even know are going to accept the job, I'm going to be very honest. It's very low on my list. I don't mean to be callous, but when you're throwing out job applications, people are filling them in and hopeful to get a job. Do I want them to work here? Yes, I do. Do I don't want to tarnish our reputation and any of the things that we've worked so hard as a community to create? But I also recognize the hierarchy of needs. And the hierarchy of needs is to get the best possible, best qualified people here as fast as we can, by any means necessary. So if that means throwing a dice and saying, post within the need, I'm in support of that. I'm in support of the, the recovery plan as it's presented. The reason I tell you that is because I'm living day to day with my daughter, going to have a baby any day out of town. I'm probably not going to be here. So I want my, 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 uh, position known publicly. What I think the greatest thing that I see that we're doing here is we're trying to deal with things that we can't control. And we all like control. I want to say that I can't control where our budget's going to be in three years with our revenue stream, but I can, and that's that gamble. That's that gamble. I don't have a problem saying to somebody that I hire, we have met the needs because the real goal of this recovery program is to bring students back to where they were. So this is not a long-term program as far as I see it, and I, if you can provide the data, that is wrong. This is a short-term plan by the government to bring kids back from 17 months of a deficit. And anybody in this business understands when they hire onto this type of program, that that's what it goes. Now, would it be hopeful that we can, through retention and continue? But these programs are not additional programs. We're not restoring programs that we lost. We're coming up with solutions to problems that we see today and we don't see tomorrow. But I can tell you, as somebody who's been on this board for a long time, they are going to be plentiful. And I'm not willing to slow the process down to dot some eye that I don't even know is there yet. I, I, and I'm, I'm telling you straight up, I'm, I'm throwing the dice on that, and I'm willing to accept the consequences of it. But I think it's really, really important that we act expeditiously, with purpose, with financial surety, because I don't disagree with what everyone is saying. But I also understand in the terms of this block of $7 million plus or minus, that's where my focus is today. And taking that $7 million and fixing what has been taken from a lot of kids. Think of the kindergartners who don't know how to read. Think of the first graders who don't know how to read. Think of all those early kids. I have been preaching from this podium for, since I got here, you build a house from the foundation up. We have to restore those kids. We have to fill those gaps. And it's got to start in kindergarten. It goes to first grade, second grade, third grade, and you climb that ladder. And the other group is the fifth graders who are going to be in seventh grade, who missed sixth grade. Where are they in September? You're talking about a group of students who on top of the educational neglect that has gone on, and it's not to anybody's fault, and I don't say that as a negative. But then you put on the social and emotional component of raging hormones as a middle schooler. So there's a whole, every, every group can make an argument as to where we need to be. And it's our mission to see that every group gets the attention they need. And I just really am very passionate about that, and I appreciate you, this group. I appreciate, uh, the public and listening to us and being patient with us. But I am very strong in moving forward and doing what our administration says are the tools that they need to be restorative. Because guess what? By the time September comes, if we get the people we try to get, the tool chest is still going to be light. We're still going to need wrenches and screwdrivers to fix this because we don't know what we're up against. But I can tell you, if we don't take an action, we're not serving the children. And that's my main concern. So again, I'll support the team and move them forward. I'm not going to be available for the workshop, and you know what my position is. Let's move the ball forward. This is a, this is a rugby match right now. And guess what? We're in the middle of a scrum. Right, McHugh? Thank you.
Thank you, John. So we'll set up the meeting for, uh, for next week. So we'll set up the meeting for, for next week. I think we have a good clear indication of where folks are. And does where and when, Mr. Simons?
So let's have the meeting back in the high school library.
Okay.
And did Tuesday work for everybody but John? 6:30?
I'm not commenting at this point, but I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Okay. Thank you, Frank.
And I just, Mike, I just want to clarify what we came to consensus on regarding the posting, if that's okay? Because there's, so we're going to post for these positions in anticipation of need by category of position.
Right.
We're going to say, in the case of the federal positions, that multiple positions anticipated. Those would only, those would really only be the early intervention elementary teachers and the teaching assistants. And just to clarify, I'd like to post a number of positions for elementary AIS and middle school AIS that were already in the general fund budget and approved by the board. Is that okay?
I think so.
Because those positions were already publicly discussed and approved by the board when you approved the general fund budget.
Yep. It was a shift.
Yes.
Okay.
The rest of them will, are individual. And so.
One's easy.
I want to just clarify with Marissa, if she understands the summary I just gave.
The ones that were budgeted. And then are there any really like ones that are really high need that you see from that list that?
Well, the science teacher, the one science, the science certification is a big concern.
CTAP is, I mean, that's a, that's a big need, right, Molly? You can see her shaking her head over there.
Because they may teach.
Multiple subjects, right?
General science one year, then earth science the next year. So we're looking for somebody with multiple certifications in science. And if the board was generally supportive of CTAP, which I think you all were in reading the form.
Yes.
If we could get that out there and try to fill it.
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody?
I see nods.
I'm not trying to change the rules, Mitch.
No, no, that's okay. But I think that there are, I mean, science.
It's tough.
It's tough. Yeah. It's very, very, I mean, it's hard to fill special need areas are really challenging.
Okay. And the rest we'll post, and we'll have further discussion on Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think I heard that have the paperwork ready? And then if the go-ahead is given that evening, you can go ahead and move forward based on the numbers.
Good. I mean, good. So when you say the paperwork, are you saying that we'll have resolutions ready to approve the positions or on Tuesday?
No, I mean, I think you were talking about, again, anticipated vacancies for those positions and then moving forward for, at least advertise.
We were planning to post for no loss tomorrow. That's what we're talking about, sending out the.
Yeah, the ones, yeah, I'm talking about after the conversation on Tuesday, the specifics.
Okay. The numbers.
The numbers.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
That's what I'm saying.
Updated, yep.
Very good. Thanks.
So you're going to post what was in the budget? All right. Those positions, the federal funds.
And by category.
We're going to, we're going to post, no, we're going to post everything, but we're going to post it as was suggested, multiple positions and not advertise 10 positions, for example, or 15 positions, for example. And then the others that are general, in the general fund already, we want to post those and just kind of move through the process on those, because those are already approved, the hiring process.
Yes, if they're already in the budget, which was approved, then obviously, yes, press forward with those, get them out there, get, you know, start, start that process.
All right. I think we're good. Thank you for the discussion. I appreciate it.
All right. We have two more discussion items. End of year celebrations is next?
Yes, just a reminder, well, first I want to go back to the fifth grade moving up celebrations that occurred last Friday. I want to say that if you haven't had a chance to see the photos on Facebook or on the district's website, they were remarkable celebrations, and I want to say I appreciate the principal's work on that and the staff. We have shifted our plans for graduation and eighth grade elevation. Weather forecast looks great for Thursday evening for eighth grade elevation and graduation. I appreciate the work that Mrs. Barker and her staff has done, and Mr. Harkin and his staff, along with our facilities department, transportation department, and everybody pitching in to make that work. So everyone will be able to be moved up at the eighth grade and graduate at the high school together as one community.
Great. Any pushback?
None.
Great. All right. Any comments on end of year celebrations? I saw some videos, they were great on the, on the website, so. Looking forward to elevation and graduation with some awesome weather planned? Fingers crossed. Okay. The next piece is the status of the pre-K planning. I know there's a July meeting, right, with the RFP?
Oh, yes, I think July 1st, we scheduled a Zoom meeting, and some of the board members have confirmed that they want to be involved in that. We have our RFP back from our attorneys, and we want to review the RFP and determine the RFP process.
Yeah.
We anticipate trying to get an award, or it could, it could be more than one by September. The program off the ground in September.
Okay. I know I'm participating in that, I don't know who else is, but.
It was Michelle.
Michelle.
Mike.
And Frank. And Frank, okay. Good. Any questions on the pre-K planning? No? All right. Move to regular business. We have several items for approval. First one is the approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? My head's on a swivel, so. Deanna, second, Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. The next one is the change in policy. Now, we had some conversation about this regarding the waiver fee for non-resident employees' children. Any final comments or questions received, Mr. Simons, on the policy?
No, I haven't received any further comments on it.
Anything? Need a motion to approve that? Frank, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? All those opposed? Next item is this proposed changes to 21, 22 school calendar. Everyone had an opportunity to weigh in on the option. The option is there. Any final comments or questions? I need a motion to approve that. Michelle, second. John, all those in favor? The modified corrective action plan regarding the payroll. Linda, can you fill us in a little bit? It's on the internal audit, right? And I read everything, but I just want to make sure that it's in the public record.
Thank you. Back in February, the board approved a corrective action plan based on an internal audit we had done on payroll. The SED just recently unsubmitted it because one of the items did not have a completed-by-date. So I revised the corrective action plan to include a completed-by-date of April 1st, which we accomplished, and I will resubmit it.
Very good. Any questions or comments on that? Need a motion to approve that? Joanne, second. Frank, all those in favor? Approved. The copier project. Any questions or comments on the copier project? No? Need a motion to approve that? Jennifer, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Copier project is approved. All right, so we have several resolutions on tenure. Do you want to take these individually, Mr. Simons, or can we do them by consent if the board is okay with that? Or do you want to?
I think they have to be voted on individually.
Individually, okay. So the first one is administrative tenure. We have Patty Farin and Mr. Goodwin. Peter? Joanne, second. Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. The next one is the principal tenure. We have on there, Mr. Maher. John, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Congratulations so far. And then going to teacher tenure. Need a motion to approve that? Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Just keep your hands up, and, because we already announced them. School psychologist tenure area. Jennifer, second. Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. And finally, the teaching assistant tenure area. Need a motion for that? Michelle, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved, and congratulations again to all those who were awarded tenure. Oh, I'm sorry. John's abstaining. You get that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that concludes our regular business. Again, congratulations to those who received tenure this evening. Now moving to committee reports, and Marissa, you're on with Appendix D.
Our Appendix D committee met on June 10th and June 14th, and I just wanted to say thank you to Joanne Taylor for her service on the Appendix D committee, Jim McHugh, Drew Romanowski, and Allison Hosier. Our committee met almost weekly, and we do have a finalized matrix that I would like to share at a future board meeting, and we were able to add one unpaid club to that paid matrix. So there's a lot of group work, and I'm happy with the finished product. Does anyone have any questions about the meeting minutes?
Do not, Joanne, any final comments? Thank you so much for all your work with the, with the committee, Jim, and Marissa, and the team, but I appreciate your stepping forward for that.
It was very good, and I think the committee worked well together, and I was happy to see the final product.
Excellent. Excellent news.
Thank you.
And you met the June 30 deadline. Thank you. I really appreciate it, so it was important. And I know that, was it announced that Allison is now?
Yes, Allison Hosier is the new EGT A president.
She was the vice president? Okay. Just want to make note of that. Linda, any committee reports? None at this time. Mr. McHugh, anything? Jim? No committee reports? And Mr. Simons?
Nothing further.
Nothing further? Very good. Next item on the agenda is table motions. I have none at this time. Old business board members, anything to bring up? Nope? Okay. We have several items on the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Joanne?
Could you please pull 11B for a separate vote? My husband is on it.
11B. Anyone else? No? Okay, I need a recommendation to approve items A through I, with the exception of B. Need a motion for that? John, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Not need a motion to approve item B? We're here. Deanna, second. Frank, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Joanne's abstaining? Approved. We do have an addendum. A non-instructional position was added after the board agenda was posted. That's for an LPN. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve the LPN position? Jennifer, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? New business board members, anything you want to bring to the table? Now, the new business would be our workshop meeting, which we held on Tuesday, 6:30, 7:00, whatever.
6:30.
6:30 work? 6:30?
High school library.
High school library, 6:30? All right. Any other new business?
Mike, just?
Yes, John?
Can we take the, just to put it out there, that we'll start thinking about our board retreat?
Board retreat, yep.
I know it's early, but I figure we float the idea and try to come up with a program so that we can get back together and get back to where we need to be.
Thanks for bringing that up.
We don't have enough to think about right now.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up, John. I think that the topic came up about the board meeting structure, and maybe bring someone from NISBA to help out, talk about just how things function, just some reminders. We have some new board, board members. The other thing we want to talk about too is how do we come back in person? Are we just going to be, the governor pretty much said, we're good to go, no more virtual, so we'll just start planning the same thing we have in the past as best we can, to either stay in one location where we have the board meeting, the boardroom, the district office, and then if we can rotate, you know, like we have, it'd be great to get back in the buildings and see kids and do some things with our school community.
But are we going to continue to bring virtual?
I think it's, it's, it's part of our process now, really. Mr. Goodwin's smiling. He's, he's happy. Do you need any new gear? We have federal money for that. Some tech money.
That was too sweet, huh?
Yeah, we can, we can pull it off? Yeah? Oh, yeah? Okay.
I think it's actually in.
I, I think the public record, you know, when we talk about, it creates people who can view it later, they can see what's going on. I really think it's a good public participation, community, kind of relations aspect to the, to that livestream too. So yes, let's continue with that, and if we can do it on the road, it'd be, be wonderful when we have those meetings in district or in schools. Anything else? New business? All right. We now move to our second public forum. Linda, do we have any, any final comments? No? Okay. Board forum, I'll start on my right this time with Frank. Anything? Joanne?
Just a quick congratulations to all our newly tenured, our new retirees, and a big thank you to Mrs. Jennifer Massey for her work with us the last six years. Her quiet guidance has helped us through many situations, her willingness to listen. And Jennifer, you will be greatly missed.
I was just going to say, sitting next to Joanne's tough, because she always says everything before I get a chance to. So I echo what Joanne says, and Jennifer, you will definitely be missed.
Deanna?
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone that was honored tonight, and good luck, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deanna. Mark?
Thank you, Jen, for everything. We'll see you at, what's that, 1500 Fifth Avenue over there?
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. John?
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure, and good luck, and we will call you regularly to try to drag you back into.
Thanks.
Jennifer?
I just want to say thank you, and thanks for bearing with me so I could get through it. It's a bittersweet day for me, and thanks for putting up with me for the last six years. So know that I'm always here, and I'll always root for you, and I'll advocate wherever I can, and I'll continue to work hard, no matter what I'm doing, on behalf of the district.
Thanks, Jennifer. Michelle?
Congratulations to everybody that got tenure tonight, and Jen, you're definitely my partner in crime, sitting over on the same table with you. I'm going to miss you, but we'll see you at the end.
Yes, still connected. And I just want to say again, I echo everyone, congratulations. I'm glad we could do it in person and see every, as many folks who could attend.